And I didn't see Mr. Terry Wright. I think so. I didn't see Pastor Terry. But, so I will lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Turner will take our pledge of allegiance. If you'd bow your heads. Lord, thank you so much for the things you do in our life, Lord. We sometimes make the mistake of paying no attention to the things you do. And we pay no attention to the supernatural things that you do, Lord. And we just thank you so much for being a part of our county, a part of our lives, and a part of our community here, Lord. And we ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes of October 23rd, regular meeting.
Okay, so I have a proper first.
I'll second it.
Okay, a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, and we will now recess and go to our Port Authority meeting. So we'll convene our Port Authority meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes of October 9th, 2018, regular meeting.
Okay, so I have approval.
I'll second.
All right, first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, now.
Mr. Chairman, if I could real quick.
Yes, sir.
Just to give you your monthly update on where we're at on the Bargeport warehouse matter. The county has been now, or the Port Authority, has legally been put back in possession of that property. The tenant that was in there is now vacated officially. There is some equipment left over that is still in there. And we're currently negotiating with that tenant on, in regards to that equipment and what the costs involved to the Port Authority in the legal action and see if we can work something out. There's a, we have a security deposit, but that doesn't quite cover everything. So we're looking at the possibility of allowing the tenant to get that equipment if he covers the rest of our costs. So we'll see. We're negotiating with him right now. Those costs to date were about eighty-five hundred dollars total for the legal part of it. And then we had some, we had some damage to the building, that there were costs involved in that as well. The security deposit covers most of it. So I'll keep you posted as that progresses.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Approximately how much are we out?
Well, the total, as I said, the legal fees and costs to date were about eighty-five hundred. And I believe the cost for the repairs, there was some, a water bill was about another thirty-five hundred, I want to say. So.
How much was the security?
Ten thousand. So we're only really upside down, maybe.
Eleven hundred or so.
Eleven, fifteen, you know, less than two thousand. So we may resolve that, hopefully.
Well, we're not going to spend any more legal fees trying to collect fifteen hundred dollars, right?
Right.
Okay, well, that was my question. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lible.
That was a great question, Mr. Turner.
It really was.
Keep those lawyers in check. Stacy, they ripped a considerable amount of the wiring and some of our building infrastructure out. Is that in the calculation?
The, no. I mean, what was done as far as the demolition work really is a benefit to the county. It's work that was going to have to be done anyways. They did not move forward with some of the updates to the power coming into the building. But I have not been made aware of anything else that is financially detrimental to the county that was done.
Okay, that was my only concern.
Any other questions? Okay, any public comment on the Port Authority? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. And we will adjourn our Port Authority and we'll reconvene our regular meeting. All right, so Mr.?
Harvey.
Harvey. Excuse me. Mr. Harvey, if you'll read the proclamation.
Be glad to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2018-81, National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. Whereas 2008 marks the 51st anniversary of St. Christopher's Hospice in London. Widely recognized as the first modern-day hospice organization and the 36th anniversary of Medicare hospice benefit in the United States. And whereas the hospice and palliative care philosophy places the needs of the individual at the center of care, allowing patients and family caregivers to focus on quality of life, surrounded and supported by family and loved ones despite serious and life-limiting illness. And whereas hospice and palliative care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that helps individuals making decisions about the health care they would want to receive should they have serious or life-limiting illness or if they were unable to speak for themselves. And whereas Haven believes that everyone deserves comfort, care, and compassion. And whereas in 2017, Haven had the honor and privilege to serve 16,008 individuals and families throughout North Florida. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners hereby designate November 2018 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month in Putnam County and encourages citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of options of care at the end of life and to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. Done, ordered, and adopted this 13th day of November 2018. Mr. Chairman, I move this proclamation forward.
I'll second it. All right, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Ms. Crystal Burks.
She's out in the audience.
I should have had you up here, but it's tough to stand up.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to come and receive this proclamation today. I don't have a whole lot to say, except that Haven has been now in business and serving patients and families for 39 years. And coming up in 2019, we're going to be celebrating our 40th year and have been in Putnam County for 35 years. So we're very proud of that and want to thank you all and thank the community for their support and their continued support. We look forward to serving, to serving patients and families for many more years.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like just to thank Crystal on behalf of the board. Haven Hospice with palliative care and just the responsibilities you have on a daily basis to that part of our society is just invaluable. And I want to thank you. It's very important. You do a good job.
So you want your picture taken with all of us?
I do. I do. Yes, even Mr. Harvey, yeah. Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, Colonel Wells.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for any inconvenience this may cause, but I've just heard from our, the young man who's the recipient of this award. They're a few minutes behind today, if perhaps you can just skip me in the agenda for now.
We can do that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Mr. Suggs.
Yes, Sir, Mr. Chairman. Give me just one second. I'll get to the podium. Colonel Wells, excuse me, a curveball there. But that's okay. We can adapt.
That's right.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of County Commissioners. It's again, that time of year, and it's one of those times that we absolutely enjoy standing in front of you today to do the things that we do to recognize our staff. Again, as you can tell, in the back room, we have our dedicated staff that's here every meeting, not only to support myself, but to meet with citizens as well as support the Board of County Commissioners. So today is our Employee of the Year recognition. As you know, we do quarterly recognition. And this year, we had, for those employees, was Ms. Anita Cole was recognized as an employee of the quarter, Lisa Suarez, Samantha Conover, and Tabitha Lassiter. They were all employees of the quarter. This is our Employee of the Year. And the Employee of the Year is selected from one of those four quarterly employees. I've asked Mr. Press Tompkins to stand up here with me this morning and actually do the presentation, as the employee of the quarter actually resides in Mr. Press Tompkins's office. But before we do that, Press, I'm going to go ahead and announce it, so we can have her with us. If we could get Ms. Samantha Conover up here with us.
Yay. I think we figured that one out pretty quick.
Here you go. Press, you got something?
I'm going to keep this short, but Samantha has been just an outstanding employee for us. And the one thing that I can say about her, every one of our employees of the quarter are great employees. There's no question about it. Her attitude. Whenever I ask her to do something, it's, yes, sir, how fast can I do it for you? But it's just the attitude of doing anything that we need to do. She stepped up way beyond her capabilities and learned all of the FEMA reporting stuff that we had to do for FEMA, and she has been a bird dog on that. But like I said, the one thing that sticks with me more than anything else is her attitude to do a good job and do it right for us, and I congratulate her on that.
Good deal.
Congratulations.
And Samantha's been selected as the Employee of the Year. This is a plaque from Putnam County Employee of the Year 2018, presented to Samantha Conover in recognition of exemplary service to Putnam County January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018. Thank you so much and congratulations. Also, Commissioners, we have a. Also, we have a token of our appreciation on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners as well, if you'd all join us up front. Thank you, Samantha.
Matt Reynolds. This is your presentation.
Good morning, Chairman, County Commissioners. I'd like to ask Ms. Suarez, as well as the representative from First Coast No More Homeless Pets, to come up. Ms. Suarez brought something to my attention. Couple weeks ago, she brought me some information showing First Coast No More Homeless Pets had donated about eighteen thousand dollars' worth of supplies and equipment to the Animal Control, Animal Services Facility. And I wanted to make sure that they were recognized for that. We've, since I came aboard here at the county back in February, I've seen a lot of positive things happening in Animal Control, and I wanted to make sure that those positive things are being recognized. And I wanted to personally thank the representative from First Coast No More Homeless Pets for the donation. So thank you very much.
Good morning, everybody. This is Jennifer Barker. She's with First Coast. Not only have they donated the vaccinations, but they've been a huge, big support for Animal Control. They've helped us keep our no-kill status with the food donations, cat litter donations. They help us get ready and prepare all our animals for the mega adoptions by paying for the spay and neuter and for the microchipping and the vaccination. So they are a big, big supporter and have helped us quite a bit to keep with what we're doing in our goal in staying no-kill. And I'd like to thank her as well.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say real quick, we're really happy to do that. We see all of the effort put forth by all of the employees at Animal Control, and we're really proud to welcome them into our no-kill coalition. It's not easy to achieve no-kill status, and they've definitely been working really hard and stepped up. So any resources or support that First Coast No More Homeless Pets can provide, we're really happy to do that, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, may I take a point of privilege?
Sure.
Also, at this time, Commissioner Lible, since I've been here four years ago, has led the charge on animal shelter and no-kill and the hard work. Almost every Friday, you're out there with these animals and adoption. And I just want to say thank you for all your hard work in that arena.
Thank you, but it certainly is the staff. Thank you for the recognition. But Lisa Suarez, sitting right there, is the true hero.
I know she is.
Not only does she wear Animal Services, hat, services, not control, too. I'm going to get on everybody. Anyhow, she also codes enforcement. She's just a superb employee. She really is. But thank you, Larry. I appreciate it.
Appreciate your leadership on that.
Promise me as a board you won't.
We won't let it go.
Kill the building.
We won't let it go.
All right, there you go. You heard it publicly. Good deal.
Again, thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate it from y'all. But Lisa's the one you really should be thanking.
Well, we thank her.
She works seven days a week. It's a great deal.
She does. All right, well, we will move to our presentations. Mr. Brian Bergen.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Brian Bergen, Vice President for Economic Development, Putnam County Chamber of Commerce. And what we're presenting today is the Second Quarter Report, which actually covers the period of April 1st through June 30th and the activities for economic development that occurred there. As you can, I assume that you have this report in front of you, or at least I hope you do. This covers our contractual obligations and also the other activities that we do for economic development, which is keeping up with our regional partners from Jax USA, NFEDP, Department of Economic Opportunity, and the state, RDO. They are the organizations that actually send us our leads that we follow up on. That's where most of our marketing comes from for economic development, is these organizations. And we work with them to respond to leads that come from the state and from the rest of the world that come into our desk and that we do. New business development is also a part of what we do. You can see in that time period, we responded to five requests for RFPs, which, as I said, come from those organizations. And we did host two clients and met with other consultants for location consulting. Existing business, we always continue to work with existing business, whether they be small or large. We work with all of those. Typically, with small business, those tend up to be consultations, whether it's financial issues or issues that they're having within the county legislatively. Other activities in that period, we actually met with Jax Port, which I think we've had several discussions about that during the Port Authority meetings and where the port is going to go. We actually initiated some of those discussions and started down that road with that. On other quarterly highlights, at that time period, we were at 5.3%. And I will tell you, today, when I looked up before we came over, we're at 4.1% unemployment. So unemployment has been staying in that 4% to 5% range for us. At the time of this report, there were about 500 open jobs in the county during that time period. Now there's over a thousand jobs in that 25-mile radius of Palatka. If you go within a 10-mile radius, it's about 600 jobs currently. And it stands at that about right now. Our workforce stands at about 26,806 individuals, and our unemployment people are about 1,099 people. That's currently where we stand. So if we actually could fill that skills gap and solve that problem, yeah, you could see that we'd be at about zero unemployment in the county. So if we could get there, that would be great. Love to see us get to that point. Do the Commissioners have any questions for me this morning?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bergen, I just want to publicly thank you. Last week, I was in the office, and a gentleman who wants to move his business back to Putnam County was in here. His wife had already reached out to you the day before.
Yes.
And I called you, and within just a few minutes, you called back and was able to get the gentleman on the phone and hopefully bring that business back to Putnam County. So thank you for your quick and fast response on that, and I do thank you very much for that.
Thank you, and we will work to try to get him back here.
I agree. I got another one, too, that's, thinking about it.
Well, send him my way.
That's right, I will.
We'll work with him.
Yes, sir. Mr. Pickens.
Brian, did you say that there's, in the 25-mile radius, is a thousand jobs?
Yeah, a thousand sixty-seven.
What do you, why do you think the increase? Is it new construction jobs or?
I think that, just in general, most businesses, and even a lot of the small businesses we're looking at, and a lot of you have worked in the small business arena, it's hard to find employees. We've got jobs that have been open in some of these small businesses for a year, two years. I know Mr. Turner can attest to how difficult it can be to find employees sometimes. But yes, we are seeing a swell, and everyone's starting to hire more. And we currently, with the Georgia Pacific Project, Project Purple, there's 500 construction workers on site out there right now. So they're also trying to hire laborers to work on those projects. So there's open positions there. And this just represents what is in the system. This doesn't have any representation of those little help-wanted signs and different businesses and such, too. So the number could be even greater than this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing. With the Florida Power and Light Solar Plant coming in West Putnam, your district, that's going to create another 300 jobs, right?
Potentially. I think the last time they had between 180 and 200 people on site, and 80% of those positions they filled from Putnam County.
Right, so we're looking at another, that's a pretty good amount for.
Correct.
For almost about a year of construction, so.
And those jobs actually have been revolving into the different counties around us, like Baker County, where they're also building. A lot of those people were retained and have permanent positions now with those construction companies.
Good deal.
Yeah, so they've got additional training and additional skills that we can keep here.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I was going to just mention that Career Source is now back at the mall.
Yes.
And I was in there the other day, and that looks pretty good. They've got a lot of computers where they can help people.
Absolutely.
Get their resumes out. I thought it was pretty impressive.
We need to get that word out more, too. I think it's not publicized enough that that service is available to people who are either looking for a job or looking to move up in the different type of jobs that are out there, so.
Yeah, from what I saw, they had a large listing of, not just local, but outside our area.
Correct.
Of jobs that are available if people are interested.
I think they extend up to 50 miles.
I knew it was outside of Putnam.
I tend to not look more than 25, because that tends to get us outside of the county a little bit too far from, for what I'm usually looking at for my numbers.
Yes, sir.
So, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colonel, would you, are you ready?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for being flexible with us this morning. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff, and citizens, as you're aware, Putnam County has a proud heritage in agriculture. And I would like to take this opportunity this morning to introduce to you an up-and-coming expert in the field. However, to help me make this introduction, I'd like to ask Master Deputy Donnie Jordan, who is our Agriculture and Natural Resources Deputy, to assist me. Come on up, Donnie. On behalf of Sheriff Gator Deloche, the men and women of the Putnam County Sheriff's Office are proud to present Cedric Dwayne Wright, Jr., as a Putnam County outstanding citizen. Cedric, would you like to join me, please? Um, you can come, too, if you'd like. It's up to you. Mr. Our Commissioners and staff, Cedric is the son of Julia Young and Cedric Wright. Cedric is a seventh grader at Jenkins Middle School, is a member of the Church of Kingdom, the Church of the Kingdom of God. Cedric is a member of the Future Farmers of America and was a 4-H member for nearly six years. As you have probably figured, Cedric is an expiring young agricultural professional and has already become quite the businessman. Cedric, as a young entrepreneur, is already running businesses, raising chickens, selling eggs and organic chicken, canning vegetables, raising livestock, and working with hydroponics and crop breeding. Cedric has shown and sold livestock at the Putnam County Fair and has even been featured on an organic food website. I have been told that Cedric's businesses and endeavors operate in the green. No, that's not a pun for the agriculture or organic farming. I mean, he consistently makes a profit, something perhaps even some of our adult business operators could learn from. At the young age of 13, Cedric is a sentinel and award-winning agriculturist, having been recognized for excellence by the Putnam County Fair Authority and for his accomplishments in the FFA program. While all of this is most impressive, I have always believed that the true definition of a man's character is how he handles adverse circumstances. When recently confronted with a very difficult situation that would have forced some to throw in the towel, Cedric's determination and drive only became stronger. Cedric continues to handle the situation in a manner that I can only describe as heroic. Cedric is an inspiration to us all, and by order of Putnam County Sheriff Gator Deloche, is hereby awarded the Putnam County Sheriff's Office Outstanding Citizen Award. Cedric is only the third person under the age of 18 to have ever received this award. Congratulations, Cedric. One more? All right, we're back at it. Misses, would you like to?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mom, you coming in with? Come on. Raise your all smiles.
Donnie, Donnie.
Brian, make sure you sign.
There we go.
Say you want one more?
Yeah.
I just got called.
All right, just keep smiling. One more.
Boy, I got chilly in here now.
Feels good to me.
Yeah, no complaints over there. I said, there's no complaints on that side.
I know. He's enjoying it. He's a polar bear.
Thank you, Colonel.
Thank you, Colonel.
Hey, we'll now go Jim Triano.
Yeah.
Troiano.
Our friend at Water Management. Ooh, he's got checks. He like that.
You keep bringing them nice checks, you'll be even better for him.
Keep inviting him back.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Jim Triano from the St. John's River Water Management District. Earlier this year, I came before you and talked about a couple of projects that were awarded in April by our governing board. Our governing board looked at our district-wide cost share program, and we identified 27 programs in nine counties that will participate in approximately $16 million of cost share funding. Two here for Putnam County, and specifically $1,119,300 going towards two projects. They're both part of the East Flagler Regional Wastewater Treatment Facility or Expansion Program, and they're septic-to-sewer programs, and something that we're very interested in. You know, we're looking at great partnerships, we're looking at great programs, but we're also looking at protecting our waterways. And through these programs, we have the potential of eliminating approximately 500 pounds of nitrogen going into our beautiful St. John's River. So this is something that we're very proud of and that I have the honor to represent our governing board here today and our executive director in presenting these two checks to you. But before, I do just want to let you know that since 2014, through partnerships throughout Putnam County, our district has been able to award over $9 million through cost share projects, not only to the county but to the municipalities, to businesses and to farmers. And we see the need, and you all have seen the need, and you've stepped up. We've seen great applications, we continue to see great applications, and our partnerships that we all have together are certainly evidence to what we're trying to do here in Putnam County and what we're trying to do in our 18 counties in our districts. So if I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to present these two checks to you, to the people of Putnam County. Again, these are for two projects. One is for the Elsie Drive Septic-to-Sewer Project in the amount of $462,304, and the second for the Horse Landing Road Septic-to-Sewer Project in the amount of $656,996.
Yes. Press, you want to say it, please? Like I said, because this is truly, he's made things happen for you all, so, press?
Jim, we can't tell you how much we appreciate this. I mean, it's, it's almost beyond belief that we're getting this kind of money to help us expand our infrastructure in East Putnam, and it's, it's just, it's overwhelming that we can get this kind of money to help us through this. And our partner with the Water Management District has been outstanding, and we couldn't have done it without them.
That's right. And he said one more.
While we were talking back there, he said one very important thing. You all are spending the money, and that's excellent. We want to see this money spent on these projects, and you're doing it in a great way, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Don't forget the checks get in Mr. Smith.
Can I ask you to put that picture with mine, too, please, if you wouldn't mind? Mine's simple. Just press that button. I'm glad it wasn't. Oh, maybe. I didn't do the pin. I'll send it to him. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you got to give these checks to you. They won cash.
No, they won't. They're all good, I promise.
You need a bigger jacket pocket there.
Never seen Clerk Smith get up and move so quick.
Thank you, Jim.
Pretty quick. Pretty quick.
Miss Stella Brown.
We needed to fix that. You're very bright today, Miss Stella.
Good morning to each of you in your respective places. Just going to give a little update via Mr. Pickens' request on some stats as far as the library is concerned, system-wide. But first of all, I want to give you a little information on some happenings around the Putnam County Library System. Phase one of the Every Story Matters Project, made possible by a $10,000 Neflins 2018 Innovation Grant, has concluded. Jeremy has submitted the final report and gave a presentation to the members of the libraries at the Neflins Annual Meeting on September 14th. The grant helped with the creation of a recording studio for oral history interviews and podcasts. In the new Makerspace, it also paid for a year's subscription to Biblioboard Library, giving our patrons access to independently published books on their computers, tablets and smartphones. Its companions program, Press Book and Selfie, allow our own local authors to add eBooks to the collection. Press Book helped authors format their books for print-ready and digital format, all for free with a library card. Selfie is the submission portal for Biblioboard Libraries powered by the Library Journal. The grant also made possible three different writing competitions. The literary magazine will be made available in print, online, and October, all five library branches also have a local authors' collection of books now. Over 173 books were added, with more soon to be processed. That's just some of the stuff that's going on at the library system. Over this past year, we've done primetime in two of the locations in Putnam County and South Putnam and West Putnam. Crescent City, primetime was outstanding, not to say that Interlockens wasn't, but the one in Crescent City was outstanding, and I'll tell you why. The families that attended that program were migrant workers.
Excellent.
It was a very few regular patrons that attended that program. We had migrant workers getting off work, rushing home, gathering up their families and rushing them to that library. There were times when we had 30 participants in the Crescent City Library, which we've never seen in a of all the libraries. So it was very neat to see that the people were taking advantage of this family literacy program, which the parents really thought it was for the kids, but it really wasn't for the kids. It's a program that teaches the parents how to work with their kids with their reading and how to ask open-ended questions to make sure that their children fully understand what they're reading. We also did the Summer Reading Program. Jeremy did an invention convention contest for Putnam County, and Levy were both involved. The winner of the Putnam County 3D printer was Gage Norris. He won the printer for that competition. We do an ECRR program, which is every child ready to read. That program is done countywide, it's for ages zero to five, and it's a program that actually helps prepare kids before they ever set foot on Putnam County school grounds. Makerspace, which Jeremy will talk about when he does his presentation, we just finished Bull on the Ass, which Jeremy Yates and Alicia Magnum participated in and came in contact with over 700 children. We're getting ready to do Cookers with Santa on December the 8th, from 1:15 to 5:15. We had 150 slots, they're all booked. We're also gearing up for One Book, One Putnam, and with One Book, One Putnam, there will be a book discussion at each of the libraries throughout Putnam County Library System. Now to give you some information as far as stats go, we wrapped up our summer program on Saturday, August 4th. We had a total of 192 programs offered, mostly June, July, at all five branches. There were 61 in Palaca, 33 in Balswick, 32 in Crescent City, 32 in Melrose, and 34 in Interlocken. The summer storytime attendance, 342 children, 14 teens, 92 adults for Palaca. One child, one teen, zero adults for Balswick. 110 children, 010, 24 adults for Crescent City. 183 children, 2 teens, 120 adults in Melrose. 92 children, 10 teens, 49 adults in Interlocken. Total, 728 children, 18 teens and 49 adults. Other programs consisted of 3,269 for all locations. Total attendance for all branches, 4,300. Books, hours read by branch age group. Crescent City, 1,975 books, ages zero to five. 1,299 hours, ages 6 to 10. 160 books, teens 11 to 18. Interlocken, 834 books, ages zero to five. 817 hours, ages 6 to 10. 110 books, teens 11 to 18. Melrose, 782 books, ages zero to five. 551 hours, ages 6 to 10. 232 books, teens 11 to 18. Palaca, 1,744 books, ages zero to five. 310 hours, ages 6 to 10. 35 books, teens 11 to 18. As far as our annual stats, circulation, check-ins and checkout. Balswick, 1,514 check-ins, 1,509 check-outs. Crescent City, 11,977 check-ins, 11,316 check-outs. Interlocken, 9,061 check-ins, 8,447 checkout. Melrose, 9,416 check-ins, 8,416 check-outs. Palaca Headquarters, 32,000 check-ins, 31,000 check-outs. And that's just from the previous year. So that's what's been going on in your local libraries.
A lot. That's impressive.
Wow, excellent.
Jeremy is going to do his presentation, and I read mine because he may need a few minutes longer than I need.
Thank you.
Stella, Stella, thank you so much for what you do and the staff for our library system. Thank you for that.
That's good to hear.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Okay, so Stella mentioned the Every Story Matters Project a little bit. I wanted to talk a little bit more about it. This was funded by Neflins, which is the Northeast Florida Library Information Network. It's a multi-type library consortium that serves 60 different library systems in Northeast Florida. And this project, Every Story Matters, was meant to engage and empower the community through the power of story. So a little bit about me, if you don't know, I'm the Special Projects Coordinator of the Putnam County Library System. I apply for grants, work on special projects, which include things like the One Book, One Putnam. I'm also responsible for teen and adult programs and marketing. So the Every Story Matters Project had two main components. The Oral History Project, which is starting up soon, is about gathering and preserving and promoting the rich history and culture of Putnam County through recorded interviews with local historians and other live storytelling events, discussions and presentations. So to that end, we actually have created a recording studio at the Palaca Library, the headquarters library in Putnam County. It actually opens when the How-To Center, or Makerspace, does, December 10th. So that's just around the corner. This recording studio is in an old office that we didn't use anymore but for storage. So we've outfitted it with a two-person podcasting package that'll allow us to create some oral history projects. It's also, we also bought some oral history storytelling kits for the branches, so there's voice recorders and podcasting packages that are a little bit more mobile that'll be going to the other four branches. Some other things that we purchased in terms of audio and video equipment were some, like I said, the recording studio equipment, as well as the ones that are going to the branches, the voice recorders, the video recording equipment. We also got some PA systems and lighting and things like that for the live storytelling events. And then the other portion of this grant was for the local authors. We wanted to start a local author collection to highlight our existing local authors, but we wanted to have some other programs that encouraged other people to become local authors. Now, when this project started back in February, March, Rethink Books, the local bookstore actually closed down. They actually donated a lot of books and talked to some of the local authors they had been working with to try to get us some more local author books to start that collection, and that was a really great response. But since then, we've, we've had over 170 books, most of them donated by the authors, put into the local author collection, which is available at all five libraries. Other things that we did, she mentioned Biblioboard, which is an online resource that, where anyone in Putnam County can find independently published authors and their books. But also, the Press Books and Selfie kind of add-ons to that allow anyone to format their own book and make it available on Biblioboard as well. And as long as you're physically located in Putnam County within the boundaries, you can sign on to Biblioboard for free without even having to have a library card, but if you step outside of Putnam County, you're going to have to log in with your library card. But that's something that we were able to do through this grant. We also had three writing competitions, which are resulting in three literary magazines to add to that local author collection. So we, besides establishing all of those things, we also plan on doing what I'm calling a movers and makers podcast, where I'm going to interview local makers, entrepreneurs, change leaders, authors, artists, things like that. The literary magazines are about ready to come out. One of them did The Road to Melrose. That came out in October, the Teen Art and Writing Challenge, as well as Putnam at Heart. Those come out very soon. And then also, we're going to have some more storytelling events. The other thing that is starting up right now is the Library Services and Technology Act grant that we got from the Institute of Museum and Library Services, which is administered by the Division of Library and Information Services, commonly known as the State Library. So basically, federal money administered by the state given to Putnam County. And so that project is called Bringing the 21st Century to Rural Libraries: Inspiring the Next Generation of Makers and Inventors. This particular project is geared toward ages 6 to 18 and will allow us to offer some computer encoding classes at the library, as well as do some fun things with robots and other equipment. So all of that is coming very soon. Just a quick overview, that's a $42,930 grant, so federal, federal tax dollars coming to Putnam County libraries. The very first event that you'll see is the How-To Center Open House Dedication, the week of December 10th through the 15th. So I hope that all of you will join us. Commissioners, you'll get a formal invitation. December 10th through the 15th, it's called the Holiday How-To Fest. So a lot of different workshops all week long to celebrate the opening of the How-To Center, which is, used to be some offices and storage space in the Palaca Library. We've converted it into basically public space. It's a combination kind of classroom, separate meeting room that we can have these computer classes and How-To Fest and stuff in. It also is where the, the recording studio is. There will be satellites of that How-To Center opening in Interlocken and Crescent City in the next couple of months, and then some of those robot kits and stuff will also be going to Balswick and Melrose for their mobile Makerspaces. Melrose is planning an expansion of their library, so they'll have a, a Makerspace in their library eventually, too. But yeah, so like I said, we're offering teens and children basic computer encoding classes. We're going to be doing the Invention Convention again and, and doing what I call show and tech, basically technology petting zoo workshops where we showcase the robots, coding kits, 3D printers and stuff like that that we have in our collection, the ones we already have and the ones that we're getting with this grant. So in the future, we'll be offering a lot of how-to workshops on building apps, websites and games, and just trying to do whatever we can to inspire the next generation of makers and inventors with even more STEM, STEAM programs, that's science, technology, engineering, arts and math. That'll also include things like how to sew, how to quilt, how to podcast, that sort of stuff like that. So that's basically what I wanted to tell you about. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Lot of information.
Lot of information.
There's a lot going on at the library.
I'm impressed. No questions? Okay, well, thank you, Jeremy.
Well, if you think of any questions, like I said, you're welcome to come to that How-To Center Open House the week of December 10th. So I'll be there every day of that week doing classes, and you can ask me whatever questions you want to there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cheryl Lynch?
Just a quick overview, that's a forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-dollar grant, so federal tax dollars coming to Putnam County libraries. The very first event that you'll see is the How-To Center Open House dedication, the week of December tenth through the fifteenth. So, I hope that all of you will join us. Commissioners will get a formal invitation. December tenth through the fifteenth, it's called the Holiday How-To Fest. So, a lot of different workshops all week long to celebrate the opening of the How-To Center, which is, used to be some offices and storage space in the Palaca Library. We've converted it into basically public space. It's a combination kind of classroom, separate meeting room, that we can have these computer classes and How-To Fest and stuff in. It also is where the recording studio is. There will be satellites of that How-To Center opening in Interlaken and Crescent City in the next couple of months. And then, some of those robot kits and stuff will also be going to Boswick and Melrose for their mobile Makerspaces. Melrose is planning an expansion of their library, so they'll have a Makerspace in their library eventually, too. But yeah, so, like I said, we're offering teens and children basic computer encoding classes. We're gonna be doing the individual convention again and doing what I call show and tech, basically technology petting zoo workshops, where we showcase the robots, coding kits, 3D printers, and stuff like that that we have in our collection, the ones we already have and the ones that we're getting with this grant. So, in the future, we'll be offering a lot of How-To workshops on building apps, websites, and games, and just trying to do whatever we can to inspire the next generation of makers and inventors with even more STEM, STEAM programs, that's science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. That'll also include things like how to sew, how to quilt, how to podcast, that sort of stuff like that. So, that's basically what I wanted to tell you about. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
Lot of information.
Lot of information.
There's a lot going on at the library.
I'm impressed. No questions? Thank you, Jeremy.
Well, if you think of any questions, like I said, you're welcome to come to that How-To Center Open House the week of December tenth. So, I'll be there every day of that week doing classes, and you can ask me whatever questions you want to there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cheryl Lynch?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Hope you're doing well. The quarterly report for July through September, I believe, was distributed along with a copy of the grant application that we submitted to EDA for the First Coast Fresh Food Innovation Center. Be happy to answer any questions you may have concerning any of that. Was hoping to have a little bit of news today from the EDA connection we had with Greg Vadei, that we were invited to fully apply, but it's been the thirty days, and we're still waiting to hear it's any day now. So, as soon as we get notification, we'll definitely keep you informed.
Mr. Pickens?
Cheryl, I guess if we received the grant, how long before this center would open? Do you have a timeframe?
According to EDA, once we, we will have sixty days, I believe, to submit the final application for the grant, and it'll take at least another sixty days to receive notification. And with paperwork and approvals and things of that nature, it'd be probably ninety to a hundred and twenty days. So, as soon as we get notification that we're approved, we'll set up the financing portion because it is a reimbursement grant, and then get the process rolling. Once we can start construction, it'll be probably six to eight months, very conservative, it could be sooner, to be up and running after that. So, hopefully, by the end of next year, this would be open, should we get the grant. Fingers crossed, wish upon a star. And we do have support on the federal level, the state level, and obviously, the local level, when you guys had toured the facility.
I know you explained when we toured the facility, but for our audience or viewers, can you just kind of give us an idea of what type of businesses would be using that facility? Don't wanna put you on the spot. I know David Dinkins is back there. He might be able to answer.
He can, he can come up and join me. I'll put him on the spot as well. We have existing businesses that would be utilizing the facility, such as farmers, for food innovation. We're going to have a USDA and FDA-approved kitchen for innovation processes. We're also looking into having two bottling lines for anything from water all the way up to peanut butter, potentially. And we have a couple clients that are already interested in participating in that. There will be meat processing, potentially, as well. There'll be food aggregation of vegetables and distribution. So, it's a combination. It's gonna be a pretty in-depth facility and the wide variety of opportunities that will exist for existing small businesses in addition to new ones. We're hoping to help them expand into export markets with new product development that they may have through the connections that we've already established. Did you want to add to that?
Yes, from the University of Florida angle, you know, we have a lot of resources, and we'll have a technical advisory committee, people involved, everything from packaging to food safety. We've also, there's a new young man named Matt Krug. He's down in Amokalee. He's a University of Florida statewide specialist with food science. He has toured the facility, and it's on his radar. It's one of the main places that he would work. As people come in there, he would, he would train people how to navigate the USDA and FDA regulations. And again, all that would be free from, you know, University of Florida. So, a lot of resources. We're just very hopeful this, the EDA, I do want to say the EDA application that we've done is tied in to resiliency and related to Hurricane Irma money. There, we've been told there was about, let me get this right, there's about, what is it? Sixty million left. And there's more than that in applications. So, we've got about a one-in-four chance, if you just look at it straight from the money available to the money requested. But we're not putting all our eggs in one basket. There are other EDA funding streams. And again, as Cheryl mentioned, we're working with our federal and state partners, having discussions with the DEO about other funding, funding options.
Thank you.
One other thing I would like to point out to you, my newsletter went out this morning. Tariffs are gonna hit hard. I've got some businesses that it's starting to affect. Just be on the lookout. Prices are going to start rising. A lot of businesses, it's gonna affect everything from the construction industry to the restaurant industry. They need to figure out how they're gonna absorb some of the cost, how the cost is gonna be passed on to the consumer. So, you may see a shift in the way economy is gonna be going in the next six to eight months. Just wanted to put that on your radar, so if you hear of businesses that are trying to figure out the mess, I'm here to help. Where we're starting to implement some plans and do some financial evaluations to see how we can help them absorb and keep them in business. Hate to be a Debbie Downer, but want to keep you informed.
No, no. Being, getting the information and the fact you're throwing a rope as to how to help, so.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, I'm gonna take a five-minute recess. Okay, we'll reconvene our meeting, and we'll move to public comment. I have a blue card. You don't have to fill out a blue card, but it's, it is helpful. And again, when you do approach up front, you, your name, your address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. My first card I have here is Yvette Reyes. Reese.
Reese.
She'll correct us.
Good morning.
Good morning. Pull that down a little bit.
Yvette Reyes, twelve ninety-one, State Road nineteen, Palaca, Florida, three two one, seven seven. And most of you know me, except for Mr. Pickens. My question is regarding animal services. With Chip leaving, I wanna get assurance from all of you that this is just not gonna go away. Chip has been the biggest advocate for our animal services. He's gotten us to where we're a no-kill shelter. And from the background, I haven't been forefront, because I work in Jacksonville, so I never get to attend any of these meetings, but I support the animal services with food and donations that I drop off next door on a monthly basis. I need to just find out, what is, if, if there's a timeline for where this new building is gonna get done? We have the money to do it, and if there's any additional planning going on?
Yeah, there actually has been. There's money allocated for it. We do have things in progress. We've been having an update. I'm not sure if, Press, do you have an update for us? Okay, but we've been doing ground samples. We've been doing everything to get it in, in motion and grant you. It's gonna be, we're gonna continue on even without Mr. Libel, because he was the main pusher on this thing. We all had our own things, and he had, that was his. But no, it will not fall between the cracks. It will continue till completion.
Okay. Can I just do one follow-up?
You sure can.
And we got the ground sampling back, correct?
Correct.
So, now, what is the next step?
Mr. Chair? Yes? What we've done so far is we've got the ground sampling back, the boring samples back. We're working with the, with legal, not our legal, but outside legal, on getting the matters of the conservation and things that are taken care of. We're working on surveying to cut out the conservation area, so we can get the footprint of what we actually have as far as building construction area. Once we get all that information gathered up, then we can move forward with that as well. So, that's where we're at today.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Hold it.
Oh, sorry.
What he was trying to say is, then we'll see how the building can fit on the property we got left.
On the property, yeah.
That's what we're looking at.
I kinda got that just.
And that's the conversations we're having. And believe me, I do not want to see animal services, and I'm sure neither, none of these commissioners do want to go away. Mr. Libel has done remarkable work in the last four years to get us where we're at today. We sure don't want to go back to the first day that I got here and the people lined up to speak to us about animal services and the problems we were having. Doesn't happen anymore, and we thank Commissioner Libel for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Reyes was one of those people.
Exactly. I moved back here in twenty fourteen, and I was like, a kill shelter? What? No way. Yeah. But thank you for your time.
And you know, that's difficult to maintain as a no-kill shelter. It really is in today's time.
It is, I know that, yeah.
But it's been remarkable, the work that's been done out there.
Yes, it has. And thanks to No More Homeless Pets for helping us.
Well, there's others, too. There's other partners that, yeah.
Yeah, and Dr. Tony as well helps us, yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a follow-up comment on that as well. You're absolutely right. There's been a lot of work done in animal services over the years under Commissioner Libel's Washville Eye. And again, we are in the process of moving forward on the property out off of State Road nineteen to get that project going. And so, it's, it's my desire and my hope that Commissioner Libel will be extremely involved in that moving forward, as our, as our citizen representative on that as well. So, but that's, we are moving forward on that project.
I agree. Thank you very much. I have another card here. Margaret Webster. Again, if you give your name, your address, and try to limit it to three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Margaret Webster. The address is eight five four North State Road twenty-one in Melrose. And the item on the agenda is the moratorium, and that it's being extended. If it's being extended, why did we get a letter from Putnam County Sheriff telling us that some of our games are illegal? Putnam County Sheriff isn't telling us what games are allowed and what are not. We're, we want to be more than compliant. Tell us what's allowed and what's not, and if we have, if we have anything that's not allowed, we'll get rid of it and put other things in that are allowed. We need some guidance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Colonel, do you have any comment on that?
So, a portion of that is correct. Let me just try to bring everybody up to speed. First of all, I know that there has been some rumor that has gone around that the Putnam County Sheriff has shut these operations down, and that is not correct. What has happened is we have issued a letter letting all of the businesses know that we have, basically, there isn't any intent to shut them down. However, a very longstanding law on what games are legal and illegal has been clarified through an appeals court process, and we have been given a rendering or an opinion from the Attorney General's Office that any games, as stated in the letter, that are programmed through the computer systems as games of no chance predetermined outcome games, or slot machines are illegal. The businesses are free to continue to operate as long as they don't operate those machines. So, we, in consideration, notified all the businesses, some in person, some by mail, that as of November tenth, we were going to have to start enforcing state law. This doesn't have anything to do specifically with the county or code enforcement. These are criminal statutes. And so, we would just ask, and I had personally, and our staff has fielded lots of questions about these games and our movement forward from here. So, just encourage you to forward, continue to forward those questions to us, either by email or just having the person call us, and we'll do the best we can. However, it is not the position of the sheriff to provide legal advice to business owners on what games they should and shouldn't operate. It is my understanding, after a lot of conversations with these business owners, that these owners are well aware of what is considered a game of no chance, a slot machine, or a pre-reveal game. That is a game that tells you, before you press any button, whether or not you will or won't win. It has to be a game of skill. So, we've encouraged all our businesses to contact their legal advisors and to get opinions from their legal advisors on what these games were legal or not. The letter does state that at some time and point, criminal prosecution and criminal investigations may be necessary. may be necessary. We have not begun that yet. We plan to continue to work with these businesses and provide the information as far as we can to help them to come into compliance. Now, I've been told by the representatives of at least a few businesses that this is in effect shutting them down, because these are their profit makers, and we're just trying to very politely explain, but that doesn't have anything to do with Putnam County. These are gambling laws that have been active in the state of Florida for years. There's been questions on whether or not these laws apply to these machines, and the appeals court and the Attorney General have ruled that they do. Therefore, we're statutorily bound to enforce this law, which will begin sometime in, in the future. So, again, that's our response. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody has or, and, oh, so let me talk about the moratorium. So when it came to the sheriff's office attention that the moratorium was approaching expiration, the question was raised, what's the thought on continuing the moratorium? It was our opinion, certainly our humble opinion, and certainly up to the, the board to do as you see fit, that in such a state of change with these types of businesses and, and the state of change in what machines are legal and, and illegal, we didn't see it basically fair to business owners to come in and spend a lot of money setting these businesses up when they may not be able to operate the types of machines that they think they can. So we thought it more prudent to give some more time for us to begin the enforcement on this and to let the business owners basically learn to digest this law and learn, learn the, the interpretations of the law through their legal counsel before they incited to, decided to invest money in the businesses. So just to basically keep the confusion down and to keep the complexity of the situation at a minimum, we felt that it was better to at least temporarily prohibit the opening of any new ones, at least in the unincorporated portions of the county, until said time as this law and the business owners and everybody involved have a chance to interpret this law. So that's why we recommended with moving forward with the continuation, certainly at the discretion of the board, but we will be moving forward with our responsibilities under the criminal statutes.
But no one is giving us guidance, telling us, yes, these are okay, these are not okay.
Many times, many times.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't think we need to have a, a debate today over each side of these issues. I think that she made her presentation, Mr. Wells made his, and if, if they want to discuss it at a later time, I think Mr. Wells would be more than open to any of that discussion.
Thank you, sir. And I have a.
With any of these owners.
I brought a stack of business cards in anticipation of this. I'll be happy to give them to anybody and we'll have that conversation. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Colonel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Ed Killebrew. I reside at one forty-six Bardin Estate Circle. Not quite sure if what I'm fixing to say is, is okay. If it's not, stop me, okay? I just wanted to get up this morning and recognize the board for the, what y'all have done since, you know, the board's changed in the last couple of years, the things that y'all are doing, have done, I think are for the betterment of our community. I really truly believe that. I know in the past, I've stood up and, you know, criticized a few of y'all, criticized you in private, criticized you in public, but I truly believe that this board has been working for the betterment of our community in Putnam County moving forward. With that being said, I wanna say thank you, Chip Libel, for everything you've done. You know, you've put up, now I might get a little emotional here, because Chip's a dear friend of mine, been a friend of mine for many, many years. And we've had our, we've had our picks and our, our problems, and I'm not gonna talk to you no more, and this kind of thing, you know, and always come back to, to being what we are.
We've had some rough ones.
But I do wanna say, and, you know, this might not be polite to say in, in mixed company, so I apologize for that, but Chip's got a dirty jockstrap. He, he, he's worked hard. He's worked, over the last twelve years, he's worked hard to do the things that, that we needed done in this community. Giving up time from his family, from his, his wife, his children, to come out and support us as a community of Putnam County. And I personally just wanna say thank you, Chip. And, and I just, I'm not through. I, I hope and I pray that you just don't slide back into the swamp, that you just, that you keep on plugging and you come out and, and you hold the board, the new board, to the fire. That you, that you do things that need to be done for our community. I know you will, but I wanna publicly say that to you so that you know that there's a, there, there's out here that we need help, you know? And I'm not saying anything about the rest of the board. That's not, that's not what I'm saying at all. I just, you know, we all need people to call us up, hold us to the fire, and keep us going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Mr. Killebrew, we do, we even enjoy it when you criticize us. Keeps us on track.
You gotta love Ed. He's involved. We need more citizens like Ed Killebrew.
Yes, we do. He is very much involved. All right, do we have any other comments for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close that portion and I'll move to our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item C and item L.
Okay, uh, let me mark that C and L, and I need to make an announcement that item F has been pulled, so that one won't be part of our agenda. And then there's been an addition of P. Mr. Harvey?
I'd like to pull item I and J.
Mr., well, Mr. Libel's still going through stuff.
I'd like to pull also L and then also M.
Mr. Libel?
Well, being my last meeting, I wanna pull everything. All right?
You have that right, sir.
I wouldn't do that to y'all.
Remember, God's gonna count votes.
That's right.
Is there any topic you would like to pull?
No, I'm sorry. Absolutely not.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
Okay. Item C is concerning the legislative appropriation on the East Palaca Fire Station and us accepting that appropriation. The appropriation is for one million dollars. We've gone through ninety-five percent of the design phase. We've gone through pre-construction services at about ninety percent, and we've determined that this project is going to cost three hundred thousand more dollars than what we have, but than what the legislative appropriation has given us. Now, in, in addition to this million dollars that we're accepting today, there was another legislative appropriation for an additional eight hundred and seventy-five thousand that would run water out to this station. So if we don't do this, we're, we're gonna basically lose one point eight seven five million dollars' worth of legislative appropriations. And, and I, I think that we need to move forward, and the, the reason this needs to be done today is because we have to have this project done by June of next year, or we, or we stand a chance of losing this million dollars that's in the, the documents. So we've got to order our metal building, get it on the way, get shop drawings done and get it back, and then on the day that they'll accept it for manufacturing, there's no telling how long it'll take or how much of a lead time there's gonna be, because if ten people put in a, a metal building the day before, we're ten behind whoever was there the day before that. So there's no way of knowing. So we're prepared, if the board will, will vote to give us a not-to-exceed another three thou, three hundred thousand dollars at this time, then we're gonna continue value engineering this project as we move forward and, and see if we can't get it down even lower. But that will allow us to order the metal building this afternoon and get shop drawings and engineering started on the metal building to try to keep us on task. Now, as many of you, all of you remember, it wasn't too long ago, we thought we had found a terrible snafu over there by finding a muck layer, and we were gonna have to spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on driving pylons under this building. Well, we went and discussed, Press went to his engineering staff and, and they allowed us to put over, overburden on the property and search our, basically surcharge the site, which we did. So that cost us twenty-five thousand, but we would've had to done the, the land clearing portion of it anyhow as part of this contract, and the overburden prevented that. So we saved a hundred and sixty thousand or so on not having to drive piles. The site work pricings that just came in, we think we're gonna be able to do something with them. Press is looking at the site work through his continuing services contracts, and, and it's looking positive. We don't know those numbers just yet, but it's looking positive. But the best, the best way I can see it is, we're gonna have about two point, about a two point two million dollar building, and we're gonna have about three hundred grand in it. And I think that's a good deal for Putnam County.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd also like to add, staff had a meeting late last week, as, as Mr. Turner mentioned. Everyone should have a, a matrix showing the, the cost breakdown of that overage. What came out of that meeting and, and what Mr. Suggs just handed out was the guaranteed maximum price with the construction manager for the one million one hundred and seventy-five thousand. The, the matrix, the spreadsheet that was handed out shows the total cost of one point three. It shows that additional design cost and, and everything that's included in it. Wanted to be sure that the, that the board had this agreement so that we could have this approved in conjunction with the funding agreement, should the board decide that, to, come up with the additional three hundred thousand to, to move both of these projects forward. Wanted to make sure that before we approve the million-dollar funding agreement, that the board is, is, agrees that we would like to use three hundred out of, I guess it would have to be reserves, either Better Place or, or general fund reserves, but to also give county administrator and chairman the authority to execute this guaranteed maximum price agreement as well at the same time.
Mr. One last thing, if I could, Mr. Chairman. The reason I'm asking for three hundred instead of two ninety-six, six thirteen is because the, there's not an allowance yet been included for permitting fees. And I don't know if the construction manager assumed incorrectly that we were gonna waive permit fees, which I don't think we should, and so that's got to be put in there. So we have a, a small contingency in the project, as well as this other four thousand dollars, and we're planning on finding some other value engineering, nearing items on line item, when we line item this job out. So that's why I'm asking for four thousand more, even though we're gonna need a, a little more for permit, I think, than four thousand, but I think we can find the rest of that in the project. Thank you.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna really applaud Commissioner Turner and the hard work he's done on this project. You hear me say often from my seat that I love it when we partner with people and they pay part of the bill. In this case, seventy cents on the dollar is being, was done through a grant appropriations through Representative Bobby Payne's office. And, I mean, let's be honest, folks, when you can spend thirty cents on the dollar and not counting the other grant for the water out there, we know that's a corridor that's looking for growth in Putnam County. This is a win-win situation here, and I wholeheartedly support this additional request. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir. Mr. Libel?
The same thing. Not only do the citizens get a return on investment here, but we, the ISO rating, which has to do with your homeowner's insurance, this is not a lot of money to make up, just in those savings alone. So it is a win-win, and the rest of the development in that corridor hinges on this water, and this, you know, it's a no-brainer.
That's right.
I support it.
Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, I also thank Commissioner Turner and Press Tompkins, the staff, for working together to bring this project together. And, yeah, it is a good deal, and we need to make sure that we secure that other grant to get the water run out there for a number of reasons, ISO rating and get water to that corridor for future development. So I, I support it a hundred percent.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we support item C, recommend of the board approval of guaranteed maximum price and authorize the county administrator to sign the guaranteed maximum price amendment agreement with the owner and construction manager as presented to us today.
I'll second it.
Okay. Could I get clarification on that? So, there's actually two items. C is a separate item. So are you making, I, I would prefer that action be taken on C first.
I do.
And then a separate action on what was just passed out, which would be a separate agenda item.
Okay.
Okay? So it, to me, it sounded like it was a combination of those two?
It was, but, okay. My motion is then, I'll amend my motion to be that would the Board of County Commissioners approve item C.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have, do we need to vote on this now?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I also request that the Board of County Commissioners approve the guaranteed maximum price for construction of the East Palacas Fire Station, the three hundred thousand to be budgeted for this project as presented to us today.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So moves.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I get clarification on the additional monies? Is it the consensus of the board for staff to bring back a budget amendment resolution to take that money out of general fund reserves? Staff recommendation is general fund reserves, as we all are aware, Better Place only has a little bit more than that in reserves, and there may be further projects that come up with Better Place money.
Whatever your recommendation is, bring it back.
Yes, sir. We just wanna make sure that, that it's approved to the point where we can order that metal building this afternoon. That's the biggest portion. So y'all, y'all will work out the paperwork in the next month or so on where you go back and forth, basically, right?
That's correct. The additional monies, we can amend the budget in later, that, that's not an issue.
With this board action, we can proceed with the project.
May I join in?
Yes, please.
You won't see a budget amendment for this until a public hearing next year.
That's fine.
So I just wanna, we're gonna go ahead and spend the money. What I'll probably do is what I did with transportation fund during the year, do an unanticipated fund resolution, bringing the money into the capital project fund, but you'll see it again at public hearing.
That's fine.
After the fiscal year. All right.
That's good. That's fine, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
As long as you write the check, I don't care.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. All right. Commissioner Turner, you still have the floor, so you have L.
You want me to go, I think Commissioner Harvey had a couple before me. You want me to continue or? I think he had.
I and J.
I and J.
No, that's Commissioner, yeah, Harvey had I and J.
You wanna, can you do them in order, or do you wanna?
We can do it in order, that's fine. Okay, let's move to I.
I, I'm gonna, if, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, a point of privilege, I'm gonna take I and J together in one thing. Mr. Tompkins, you and I spoke before the meeting about this. We spoke to Mr. Suggs last week, and then the holiday got us yesterday, so we weren't able. I fully understand the, the task of order here, the scope of work, but for the sake of the citizens who are looking for that area, these are two roads in Palm Shore subdivision that had failing infrastructure. So if you'll, if you'll kind of give a brief highlight of what's gonna take place there.
Yes, sir. These systems were constructed many years ago. The underground drainage system, pipes, has failed, and what we're doing, that system was put in fairly deep. What we decided to do is, to really alleviate the situation was, we're gonna remove that existing failing system. We're gonna backfill that system compactly, we're gonna construct a swale system in the, in the right of way, and we're gonna put driveway culverts in. And that's where the, the concrete pipe comes in for the driveway culverts, but we're basically rebuilding the drainage system on Sawyer and Salem Street completely.
Okay, thank you. And we, we went over that extensively in our workshops that we've been working with, and we've hashed this out from where we started to where we're at today. We value engineered that, saved us some money on at today. We value engineered that, saved us some money on that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tompkins, thank you very much for your time. Mr. Chairman, I yield the floor, sir.
If I could chime in also, just for the record, as we're talking about these projects, at the end of Sawyer Street, where the drainage comes together, as you recall, there is a, there's a catch basin of sorts, which then runs drainage across a, a property, which is currently privately owned. And in that previous discussions, as you recall, you authorized us to move forward with purchasing that property so that this drainage can continue across there. And we are in the process of doing that. We're looking at hopefully closing on that by the end of this month.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tompkins.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? All right. Commissioner Turner?
If we could, since we've, since we've broken some of these out with separate vote, can we just go ahead and vote on all of the polled items separately?
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of item I and J is presented on our agenda.
I'll second that.
So, we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. So, those are...
Okay. And on item L, and I also wanted to pull in, thank you, Commissioner Pickens, so if you could maybe address L and M for Press. I just wanted you to explain to us, especially on L, the packet reads like all we're doing is providing engineering to add a generator, and, which was forty-eight thousand dollars. You could buy three or four generators and hook them to every pump over there. So, I was wanting, wondering if you could explain the different things that were included in that forty-eight thousand, other than just a generator, all the other things.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to. That, that was some of the money we received from the state emergency fund due to hurricane damage. And basically, what it was to help to design a generator to run the pump station and other facilities there, but also do a complete site plan of that area. That area went underwater majority of the time during the hurricanes. So, we're doing a complete site plan of the pump station site and all the other permissions and things we have to put in there to run the system. So, it was not just the generator. It was a lot due to the site plan work, elevation-wise, and some manhole adjustments and things of that nature. So, this was part of the state money we got for that.
Thank you, sir.
And on M...
Just a clarification of that, of what all was involved there also.
Yeah. But, yeah, there's, there's a lot more to it than just the generator. But that was one of the, the things that the state really wants to do is, is to get a generator designed and incorporated into the site plan for that facility. So, that, that was why it kind of took the heading that it did. On item M, it's the same thing. We got certain money for Buena Vista, which is that old development down off of 207A. And that went underwater also during the, the storm event. So, what we're doing there, we're taking that treatment plant offline, put in a pump station, and we're pumping back to the Gilbert Road wastewater treatment plant, which will help, there again, help expand our infrastructure system in East Polackas. So, we're continually going after these type of grants to help expand our infrastructure. And it's, it's been a tremendous boon to us to get this money.
Okay. Thank you.
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item L and M.
I second that.
Okay. We have a proper first, proper seconds. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, President.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, well, before we go too far, let me just bring in that there was...
Yeah, item P.
Item P, which is not on the original sheet. And that's also Public Works Award to Bid nineteen dash oh-one, road construction, Ashley Lake Boulevard.
If we didn't pull that, I don't think...
No, we didn't pull it. I just wanted to make sure that...
That's right.
It, it is part of this agenda.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'll open for...
You oughta do it, you oughta do it.
You have the floor.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A, B, D, E, G, H, K, N, O, and T?
P.
P, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
Okay. We have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. So, the consent agenda is complete. Okay. Mr. Tim Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As some of you have probably noticed, we have Sarah Oliver, who is assisting us. She assisted us last week and today in taking the minutes. Tony Weaver is gonna be on an extended absence due to illness. So, I'm asking everyone if you wouldn't mind to keep Tony in your prayers. Her doctor recommended that she be out of the office at least until the first of the year. So, Sarah, one of our shining stars, is helping us. But, she won't be located out here like Tony is. So, as you have any requests for documents, copies of prior meeting minutes, those may take a little longer than normal. We apologize for that. But Sarah also has her normal duties that she has. She is our, she assists the supervisor in the tax deed office, which oversees our satellite offices and also our mail operation. So, they still have a lot of work they're doing, particularly right now, tax deed applications are reaching all-time high. So, we're processing a lot of those. At the same time, we've just gone through the installation of online tax deed sales. So, there's a lot happening in her office. I would also ask of the county administrator if they would be just aware of this, particularly if multiple meetings requiring minutes to be taken get scheduled, that if you would just try to work with us a little bit over this next couple of months to look at that schedule and say, hey, let's don't put two of them there, because we're limited in our abilities to produce those minutes for you as we want to. But, on the other side of that, you know, Sarah's a great person, shining star, and I'm sure she will get the job done for you and that you'll see very little impact of that. But, we'll continue to monitor that and work hard. So, we want to thank her for her efforts in that. And those are the only items I have.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, we have a nine-thirty sanitation public hearing. Mr. Brown? That's not yours?
No, sir. It's, it's an ordinance. It's a, Mr. Chair, if I may, it's a ordinance, the main ordinance eighty-seven dash seven to update insurance requirements. Ordinance eighty-seven dash seven, established requirements relating to commercial and non-commercial solid waste collection permits, approved the application form, approved permits and established fees. We're looking to change language within the ordinance to do a little housekeeping on this ordinance. As of right now, the ordinance reads that the public liability and property damage insurance is different, fund, or, or coverage levels, as well as an umbrella for the county. What we're looking to do is proposing new language. It's a commercial insurance in the following amounts. And it, it breaks it down, there's a million-dollar policy with combined single limit coverage. And it names Putnam County as being additionally insured. So, it's a housekeeping for an ordinance related to our insurance.
Yeah, if I could chime in as well. This really is, has come to us as a recommendation after discussions with the county's risk management, risk manager, as well as sanitation, because the, the language, insurance requirements are pretty old. And most of the time, what the county receives is, is not really exactly what was required in the ordinance. But, we've been able to accept what's, what's received because it's the equivalent or greater. So, these changes are being recommended to really conform to the, to the modern insurance age and what the providers are, or the vendors are able to acquire in the insurance market at this point in time. For example, one of the requirements was something having to do with automobile insurance policy. That, it, it doesn't even exist in today's day and age. So, this is really just to conform to what the, what the businesses are able to get and provides the county with the equivalent amount of coverage, is what we currently require in our ordinance. And this is a public hearing.
Okay. All right. So, at this point, I'll ask public if public has any comments on this. Seeing none, I'll close that portion. And, do you just need a motion from us?
Yeah, bring it back for, for a motion and second and board discussion and then action.
So, I'm open for a motion?
I move approval, staff's recommendations.
I second it.
Okay.
Another discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure I'm understanding what I'm thinking I'm understanding. Basically, this is the money paid by contractors that haul garbage into the landfill.
Correct. Yes.
Just basically raising it from the stuff from years and years, years ago to the new norm standards of a million dollars.
Yeah, exactly. They get a permit from the county and, and this ordinance specifies the insurance that they have to have. And it's cleaning that up so that they're able to actually get their permits and continue operating.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd be remiss if I didn't talk insurance for just a moment. Naming us as an additional insured is very important in any policy. And business owners understand that daily. But it creates a relationship that we are notified of any changes, any lapse in coverage, anything at any time. So, that's a good thing. A certificate holder is just a snapshot of your policy at that moment at any given day. But this really says, somebody can't go out there and change their policy without us knowing about it. And that makes us a lot more covered at that will. So, just give you that little brief idea about it.
And one last thing, Mr. Chairman. A million dollars in today's world, a million-dollar single limit liability is probably the minimum you can do on any, anything nowadays. I mean, other than very small, small stuff.
Yeah.
So, I think...
I carry that much.
Oh, me too, times ten.
Exactly.
Yes, sir. So, I think that's out of line either.
No.
Any other comments? All of us have it open for discussion?
Good.
Okay. All right. Then, basically, we just need to approve this ordinance.
So...
Take a vote. Well, we've taken, yes, we'll need a vote on ordinance eighty-seven-point-seven. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we'll move to Public Works public hearing. Proposed resolution vacating a portion of Washington Street in Interlock and West Barrows, west of Barrows Road.
Yes, sir. This was the item we discussed at the April twenty-fourth Transportation Committee. It's a piece of road of Washington Street that is unopened. The property owner had requested this to be vacated. The adjacent property owner agreed to it. There's, she owns, she owns property on both sides of this road. And then, the other gentleman that owns the property does have access over the other street. So, there was no objection to this. And this is just, go ahead and formalize the vacation of the road back to those property owners.
Okay. Now, since this is a public hearing, then I'll open it up for any discussion from the public on this, for or against. Seeing none, I'll close that portion. And, let's see, we just need to approve this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval. The Public Works Department recommends board approval and signature for the resolution to vacate a portion of Washington Street and lock it for maintenance and ownership.
Okay. All right. So, we have a proper first, a proper second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Done.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the next item is a, is a zoning map amendment, which is a quasi-judicial hearing. I would ask that, before we proceed, that the board indicate any ex parte communications with interested parties on this matter and whether, if you've had any, whether those would impact your ability to make an impartial decision today based upon the evidence that you hear today. Once that is complete, I would ask the clerk to swear in anybody giving testimony on this matter.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a conversation and it will not change anything that I look at on it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have had conversations with Mr. Tuttle briefly and also with Mr. Brown and staff. It will not affect my decision-making ability.
Mr. Lybom?
I've had none.
And Mr. Pickens?
I had a brief discussion with one of the Planning Commission members and it will not affect my decision.
Okay. I have, of course, talked to Mr. Tuttle, but we haven't discussed this. So, I have none.
Thank you. And then, if we could have the clerk swear in.
Anyone who is going to speak for or against this needs to be, please stand and be sworn in.
Mr. Tuttle? Jack, stand up and raise your right hand.
(laughing).
Okay. Proceed.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, Mike Brown, Putnam County Planning and Development Services. The zoning application before you today is R eighteen dash zero-one-two. The applicant is Mr. Jack Tuttle. The request is a zoning map change from residential to, to agriculture on three parcels totaling forty-five point zero-five acres. The property is located northwest of the town of Interlocken in Putnam County. Here's an aerial showing you the outline of the three parcels. The future land use for the parcels is Ag one. The zoning is R two. As you can see, it's surrounded by a number of antiquated subdivisions with, some with limited development, residential development. And like I indicated, it's just northwest of the town of Interlocken. The proposed zoning districts would be Ag. Part of the zoning application is looking at consistency with the comprehensive plan. The Ag one, future land use category, which this, the property, properties are designated, are areas used primarily for cropland, pasture, and other agriculture activities. And residential parcels is allowed, which, or uses are allowed. Some of these existing residential areas exceed the allowed density. The Ag agriculture, in the Ag one land use, agriculture's uses are permitted and also residential at a density of one dwelling unit per ten acres. The existing zoning is R two, which is a primarily residential district, zoning district. And it does provide for either mobile homes and/or conventional used homes. And the proposed use, or the proposed zoning is agriculture. And it also, agriculture zoning also serves as a holding class for future, for future uses in, in other future land use categories. As, in looking at the analysis for the, this request, future land use is Ag and the proposed Ag zoning is consistent with the future land use designation. The areas surrounding the subject property are comprised of two borrow pits to the west and sparsely developed subdivisions to the northeast and south, some of which, and many of which contain substandard lots which require multiple lots to be, to be able to obtain a permit for development. Uses allowed in the Ag zoning district will not generate a demand on infrastructure over what would be allowed in the existing R two zoning district. The parcels contain no wetlands or areas within special flood hazard areas. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning to Ag is consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the locational requirements of the Ag zoning district, compatible with the surrounding uses. The Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the rezoning request. Staff recommends approval... Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map on the subject three parcels totaling forty-five point zero five acres from our residential two to agriculture. You have any questions of staff at this point?
Yeah, looks like none. Mr. Tuttle, did you want to comment?
Jack Tuttle at 701 Walker Drive, Interlocken. I just, something we're planning in the future, try to get some cow pasture and future homes out there eventually one day. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
I don't, but if you're ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make it.
This is a public hearing, we need to open it up for public comment before we can do that?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Okay, any public comment for or against? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close that portion and open up for a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, with regards to case number R 18-012, I find it consistent and compatible, consistent with the comprehensive plan and the goals, objectives, objectives and policies and compatible with the area. I move approval on the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so done. Okay, we have now the proposed ordinance extending the temporary moratorium on new site plan approval.
Mr. Chairman, yes, as Colonel indicated earlier, the, the current moratorium on, on opening new internet cafes is set to expire at the end of November, or November 17, I believe it is.
November 17, yes.
Yes. Since in the past couple of months, there was recently a court case that came, came down, came down the pike that ruled that certain of the machines that are currently in use in a lot of, but not necessarily all, of the internet cafes currently violate state law on gambling. And so the Sheriff's Department is pursuing enforcement based upon that most recent ruling and has requested that the board extend their current moratorium for another year so that they have an opportunity to continue to pursue that as well as kind of flush out what the, what the impact is going to be on those current internet cafes with no sense having a business owner or an entrepreneur start down the path of opening a business that they may end up find that they're not able to do or conduct legally profitably. So this request is to extend that moratorium for one year and the moratorium, again, is a moratorium on permitting and opening of new internet cafes within the unincorporated areas of Putnam County.
Okay, thank you. Alright, and as this is a public hearing, is there anyone who wants to speak for or against this ordinance? Any public like to speak for or against this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll close that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the extension of the temporary moratorium, simby the gaming business for 365 days.
Proper first?
I'll second it.
Okay, proper second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes. Colonel, could you come up a minute, please? Did I misunderstand you earlier when y'all weren't gonna request an extension of the moratorium or did I misunderstand that?
I, I may have been unclear, sir. We have asked for an extension of the moratorium to allow time for this law to be completely understood and, and for us to effectively deal with it without running a risk of having a new business open and then later finding out they're, they're not legal.
Okay. I think I remember last year that y'all originally were wanting six months and then we gave you a year to make sure that we did it and now we're at the next year. And part of that was, was to give time to actually write rules, you know, different rules that they would have to, to work under, even the existing ones you were talking about, maybe changing some of the rules. Are you just waiting to see how the law, the, the law pans out before, before we actually start writing rules or what?
That is a discussion that we have had. We're open, you know, to suggestion in that area. We certainly do not mind participating in the drafting of an ordinance to regulate these businesses. However, we felt that at this time, I think, and after speaking with our general counsel and the county attorney, state attorney's office as well, is that may be an exercise in futility at this point that these businesses cannot continue to operate under the current criminal statutes.
I got you.
And if I could chime in as well, we, the Sheriff's Office Counsel has provided us with, with some, some other ordinances that are in effect in some other counties. And I believe it was Leon County that we looked at real closely to try to somewhat emulate and tweak specific to Putnam County. So we do have those. I have provided that to Mr. Brown and we are prepared to, to continue moving forward with that exercise should it be necessary. I'm kind of pending the future of, of internet cafes in general and we'll see how that all flushes out in the next year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Harvey?
But there would be, to both of you, Colonel Wells and to our county attorney, there would be nothing prohibiting us from lifting this moratorium if we had the proper ordinance in place and rulemaking basically and zoning and all that. We could lift this moratorium in the future. We're not just bound by 365 days. We could come back and revisit this when we get everything set in place that we want.
That's correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Commissioner Harvey, because that was my question, is if things, you know, got in place and you had rules and regulations for them and, and found out that they could open and operate, that you could lift this moratorium, so.
That's correct and I, and I think, you know, we tried to be clear that we certainly don't want to discourage these businesses as long as they, if they can operate under the, the current criminal statute and, and then maybe have to take a look at some options to do some regulation if that were necessary. I don't necessarily think it'll take a year for all that to flush out, so this is a certain, something we can certainly revisit at your discretion.
Thank you.
Any other comment? We've had a proper first, a proper second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moves. We will now move to appointments. I'll start with Mr. Lible.
Um, I certainly have none, but I would like to just express my desire to continue my service in the animal services arena. So if one of you could see your way, I would be willing to serve on that board and you won't get anything controversial out of me. I just want to see what you heard today.
If you'd have started on my end, Mr. Chairman, I would have already made, tried to appoint him to that, so I appreciate very much that he's gonna, that he's gonna accept without.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's, I just want to make sure. I am passionate about that and if you'll have me, I'll be glad to serve for you.
Mr. Chairman? I would ask though that, I understand and I appreciate that, but we, I think we need to wait until officially, although maybe, I guess you could make the appointment effective aft as of November 20th.
Okay.
Be fine.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to appoint Mr. Chip Lible, a private citizen on 11/20 of 2018 to the Animal Services Advisory Committee.
And I second that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'll serve you well.
We third and fourth it, okay.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
At your service.
Mr. Lible, would there be, would there be anything else?
That's it out of me today, thank you.
If I could ask, is, I, I see there's three actually for Animal Services Committee. Would this be Mr. Rod Jones's position that we're?
They're all at large, so.
They are, but I see we have one resigned.
Sure.
The expired ones, they may still be interested in serving, I don't know. I'm just asking.
I think you're right, Rod Jones.
Whoever has the longest term available.
We'll reappoint, we'll reappoint. Mr. Pickens?
I have no appointments.
Okay. Mr. Harvey?
I have none today, sir.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I have two. I have on the Contractors Building and Trades Examiners Board. I have Mr. Paul Adamsack. Okay, and that was to replace Mr. Tom Williams who resigned. Any questions? Okay, and then, of course, at the fair authority, I got a hold of Malcolm Fabray who definitely wants to continue. Okay, and that is all of my appointments.
We would need a motion and board support for the at-large consumer representative on the contractor board.
Okay.
I move approval.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. We don't need anything on the fair authority, correct?
No.
Correct. Yeah, he's continuing. Okay, so we will move to Mr. Suggs.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Commissioner Lible, to you, sir. You know, for three years, being a member of Putnam County slash City of Palaka government, it's been an honor and a pleasure, sir, to work with you here. But more importantly, it's been an honor and a pleasure to get to know you and the community. And, you know, moving forward, as I said earlier, I think there's bigger and better plans. So I just want to say publicly that you've been a great friend, coach, and a mentor. You've been really good for me, you've been good to our staff and you've been good for this community. Just want to take the opportunity to publicly say thank you one time and, and one more time, I should say, for, for all you've done for, for this community and for me and this staff. So thank you, sir, and I wish you nothing but Godspeed ahead.
Mr. Suggs, I feel the same, thank you. Your leadership has been outstanding. I know we started off a little rocky, for those that don't know. I didn't vote for Mr. Suggs when we got the job. But we have become very good friends and I do appreciate your leadership style and I look forward to continuing it. Thank you for the kind words.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we will now, Mr. Manning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, let me say that we've got, as you know, there has been a statewide recount ordered for the 2018 general election. That is statewide. So as you know, Mr. Chairman, the canvassing board will be involved in that. That has actually started as of this morning.
Does that mean I have a chance of getting back?
Fortunately, that's not one of the recount races. However, just, so just to let you know that, that Chairman and I will both be spending a considerable amount of time over there at the elections office making sure that that recount is done perfectly as, as always and that Putnam County shines. We will not be here for the workshop this afternoon because we will be, we will both be over there. I'm sure y'all can handle everything without us, without getting in trouble. You could call me if you had an issue. Second, I have to, I have to address Commissioner Lible as well. Gosh, it's been a little over three years since I've been sitting in this chair and there's already been a lot of change. As of this moment, you Chip and Larry are the remaining two commissioners from when I first started. We've got a new administrator. So things change and I have to say that, you know, Commissioner Lible, you and I hit it off from the very first day that we sat down and I sat down with each one of the commissioners and, and I think Chip, Chip said to me, yeah, I can tell you're one, you're one of us. You're, you're, you're a Putnam County outdoors kind of guy and we're gonna get along just fine and we have. And, and it's been great working with you. I very much appreciate the historical knowledge that you've, you've brought to me and to this board and to staff. I think it has been a huge help in, in making decisions moving forward because you really do have to know what happened in the past to, to make good decisions about moving forward. And I really appreciate that and I appreciate the friendship that we've established and I wish you the absolute best going forward. And, and I hope we can continue our, our friendship beyond these four walls after, after you leave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. I appreciate that. And for your support of animal services.
Absolutely.
Alright. Commissioner comments. I'm gonna hand it to Mr. Lible for any Commissioner comments.
Why don't I go last?
Yes, sir.
That is your request.
You can start down here. I know it's very difficult to go behind them two, as eloquent as they are. But I also want to, to tell Chip how much I appreciate the last year working with him. And it's not the first time I met him when I showed up here. Chip and I have been friends for 40 years. Used to be family before I divorced his cousin. But anyhow, I, I do want, just want to say publicly that I appreciate him and I appreciate how he's helped us on the commission this year and did his best to unify this board and do the right thing and I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you. Do want to make mention before I go to Chip, painting the football stadium this coming weekend at Interlocken High School starts at nine o'clock on Saturday morning. Put on your painting clothes and come out and enjoy your time. Now I want to move on to Commissioner Lible. Chip, you've been a, a great asset around here and for me, you've been a wealth of information that I could not have done my job without. We are the oldest ones still on the board and you are the oldest, so, but I've always looked for you for that knowledge and that the value that you provided for me was immeasurable. I do wish you the best of going into the future. And anything I can do to help you, please give me a call and thank you for your service, sir.
Can you take my spot painting the stadium this Saturday? Larry, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Pickens?
Commissioner Harvey, I'd love to help you paint the stadium, but I have another commitment and probably go against my grain to, to go and paint the Interlocken Stadium when they were one of our arch rivals when I was in high school and still remain that, but thank you for spearheading that project. Where I'll be is with Ms. Shirley and Jim Griffin in Pomona Park at their home. There's a fish fry in conjunction with the Putnam County, Putnam Fitness Center and Crescent City Rotary Club from 11 to 2. They're located in downtown Pomona, right across from Geo's Auto Sales, so come out and see us there and support the fitness center. I'm gonna try not to get emotional, but Chip Lible, I've known Chip Lible most of my life. Our fathers did business together in the, in the gas station business. Chip actually told me that my father taught his dad actually how to really run a service station properly and that's a true honor. Chip's father-in-law, John Miller, the late John Miller, and George Miller, along with my dad, they put in the first three or five self-serve gas installations in Putnam County, the Handyway brand convenience stores. Like I say, I have a great respect for Chip. Chip has been a commissioner for three terms and that's hard to do. Chip governed during tough times through the recession, as my brother says. Chip governed during tough times through the recession. As my brother says, it's not fun to govern when you don't have money. And Chip did that. Chip gave his all. Chip is a true honor. Chip was one of the first people I talked to when I was thinking about running, uh, for county commissioner. And he was honest with me and he told me three things that I had to have in place before I should run. The first is, does you have somebody to run your family business? Is your family all in and are you all in? And that was good advice because it's truth. It's been a true honor to be able to serve with you for two years. I look forward to continuing our relationship. And I'm so glad you came to this meeting. And I'm so glad that you're gonna stay committed to the animal shelter and to Putnam County. And I wish you the best and if there's anything I can ever do to you, for you, just call.
I'm here for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as usual, do you want me to go first or would you, uh, because? I generally reserve to the very end. Um, but I'm, I'm gonna hand that over to Chip. Uh, I want to bring up that the Veterans Parade was exceptional yesterday. It was great. Also want to bring up that Mr. Lible is a veteran and, uh, on this board, he's the only veteran. But, uh, I always talk about our county. Our county is, is very special, especially even with the people that, uh, are interlinked and related. It's, it's special. Chip and I did not hit it off to start right off with and I understood that. I had beaten a friend of his. But anyway, with that, we worked through it for what we wanted to do for this county and Chip has become a very good friend to me. I won't miss him.
Thank you, buddy.
He's a wealth of information on things that go on in this county. But, uh, I'm gonna definitely miss you, sir. It's yours.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, before you go to, uh, Commissioner Lible, um, as a member of this board, an ex-officio member, which means I don't vote, but I am a member of this board, I would like to ask just to participate in some comments for, uh, Chip.
You go right ahead.
Who is my friend and just as was mentioned by Terry and others, uh, about the history of Chip. My family is, is a fifth generation Putnam County family. Uh, my family and the Libles and, and all of his relatives have, uh, been together our whole lives. And, um, he and I were actually talking the other day and we were talking about, uh, since our early childhood, that, um, this community has never been a extremely prosperous community. And we don't really know what it's like to be in a community that's fast-growing and businesses are moving into and there's, uh, money to, to put infrastructure in and do all those things. Uh, we've never experienced that. But as I look at our future from today moving forward, this is what I see. I see a community that is on the verge of greatness. Uh, I see a community that is going to be just as was demonstrated here today when you saw, uh, a library that's gonna be serving a digital world. Uh, I see a, uh, agriculture community that's looking for opportunities to, um, support and promote individuals in the ag industry by having this, uh, center built over at the, uh, farmer's market that will allow, uh, small rural individuals to be able to produce their products and get them out. And that when surrounding communities look at us in the future, they're gonna say, you know, they're the ones that really were the lucky ones in all of this. Because they have a community that isn't reliant on, um, tourists, that aren't reliant on bedroom communities. They're self-reliant. And just as we mentioned, and I'll echo that, that for the last, uh, 12 years, uh, this country has gone through a great recession. And it is extremely difficult to manage any government, any business in that climate. And, uh, without Chip's leadership, I don't think we'd be sitting on that threshold of greatness, uh, because of the stability, the calmness that he brought, um, when there was criticisms of this county for, uh, where we were, uh, how we had operated, that we were, uh, in financial difficulties. Um, without Chip's steady hand and vision for the future to help calm those waters, I don't know that we would be, uh, poised for that greatness like we are today. But we are. And it's because of, uh, people like Chip. There are many in this community that do this. All of you, uh, do that. And as, um, I listened to the news early this morning, uh, around six o'clock and it was talking about the senatorial election in Arizona and how those two women had demonstrated ultimate civility in an election. Uh, I thought, you know, that's what our community has. We have hard-fought elections. We have sides. We have friends. And when the victor is finally announced, the rest of us coalesce behind him and move forward. And that's what the greatness of this board has always been. And so for Chip's service for 12 years, which is pretty remarkable, uh, I want to personally thank you and thank you for your friendship and wish you well in your next endeavor. Uh, I know it'll be great for you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I wasn't gonna get teared up, but now you got me there. I'll straighten up. Um, I have to talk about that great recession and I'm gonna give you a compliment. I was gonna start with all our constitutional officers. I think we have very, very good ones. And I think you all got us through the recession, particularly you. You gave me that calmness when I asked you and people, critics in the audience were saying that we were bankrupt and going bankrupt. But I didn't believe that. And you, you told me not to believe it either, you know? Yes, it was hard. We were getting thin, but we made it through and I thank you, Tim. And I thank all the constitutionals, like I said. And commissioners, this last year out of the 12 have been the best. I'm gonna tell you right now. With a board I didn't think would ever be possible. I'll tell you that too. But there are more things at work than just us five and staff and, and anybody that has anything to do with this. And that would be, for the first time in recent history, 25, a quarter century, to be honest with you, we have representation in Putnam County, all the way to the congressional level, to our state legislature, right down to us. And so resources, money, I'll just say it, is possible now. You gotta think of all the, the long quarter of a century that we were represented or broke up into pieces where we had two or three representatives representing us. That's just as bad as not having any because nobody takes it serious. But for the first time, we have that. So I'm gonna keep it together and be very careful. The census coming up, every 10 years, we have a census. And that's when they redistrict this representation. And it can happen in the blink of an eye. So you're gonna have to be proactive before they start where they're redistricting. You gotta put a foot in the sand and say, no. Keep Putnam County whole. Let them know the projects we have going on and keep them. That's the only advice I'm gonna give today because it is the true advice for success. In the 12 years that I didn't learn anything else, if you don't have good representation above you to the sources of money, you're gonna be in the doldrums for a long time. And we're not there. We're moving at very good speed. Be respectful to each other and, and this has truly been a wonderful experience for me. 12 years of, of, uh, just a job that I loved. I really do. Um, I'll miss a lot about it and I want to stay involved to a point that you allowed me today. Thank you. And, um, with that being said, there's one person that I want to thank and I wouldn't say the bottom of, of the totem pole, but the one guy that worked for me and Press, you'll like this, is Malcolm Smith, my crew leader in District Two. He's the guy that did the potholes and all the little things that, can you please do this last minute? But I want to publicly thank Malcolm Smith and all the public works. You have the worst job in this county. You know, little resources and a lot of demand. Thank you so much, Press. And, and Terry, Stacy, Matt. Matt, you got a great future. Don't leave Putnam County. You stay here. Get it done. I'm really glad to see you working here. With that, I got a boat and a whole bunch of water waiting on me. I'll see you guys. Y'all sit down. It's not that important.
We will now recess till 5:05.
All right.
We'll reconvene our board meeting. And, uh, we will hand it over to Ms. Papel.
Commissioners, this evening's public hearing is to amend the FY 1718 budget. It's last year's budget. This is a housekeeping-only budget amendment to keep us in compliance. You've seen almost all of this before and heard, I'm sure you've heard about all of it.
Right.
Um, to save time, I'm not gonna read any of this to you. Um, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
I have none.
I have none.
We have no questions.
Then I guess we need to go through the public hearing steps and then we can pass it.
Okay. Now, being a public hearing, uh, at this moment, I'll open it up to the public. We have any comments, uh, from the public? Any questions from the public? If you have any questions, yes. Please come up here to the microphone. Even, uh, just pull that microphone around to you.
Do I need to say my name again?
Yes, you do.
Ifa Reyes, 1291. 1291 State Road 19, Palaca, Florida, 32177. Um, what is the increase? Like, what is being in compliance mean?
Anytime you increase your budget, except for exceptions listed in the statute, and I don't have the statute with me, you have to have a public hearing. These increases are mostly because one fund handed money to another fund. And so it's a form of double counting, but it increases the budget. I think a very small amount, something under $10,000 is a grant that came in.
Okay.
So.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
So it's just to replace money that was transferred to another fund?
I think the biggest thing is, is the easiest way to explain is at the end of the year, our budget has to balance. And so the things that weren't quite right at the end of the year have to be, have to be shifted. One of the biggest items in there was our workers' comp for last year was $498,000. Then by the time they took the contingency that they had in there for workers' comp and the, what was the other comp?
There were two reserves.
There was two reserves in there for workers' comp and ended up being $161,000 that the county spent additional on workers' comp than what they had budgeted for. So you have to have a budget amendment in order to make that, uh, even at the end of the year. So basically, that's what it is. There's no way to accurately budget what workers' comp is gonna cost because we don't know how many claims we're gonna have. And so I think the total budget change of all the items up and down were $185,000. But 161 of it was nothing but just workers' comp being that we couldn't control.
And is our budget a calendar budget or?
No, our budget ended November 30th of 2018.
September.
So this is, yeah, September 30th. Tired, long day. So this is the budget that's over with. It doesn't really have any impact to the current year's budget because all of these changes were taken in consideration in crafting this year's budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you have any questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the attached budget amendment resolution for fiscal year 201718, formalizing the previously approved increase of $267,278 and proving the new increase of $394,629.
Okay. I have a proper motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Is there any other business? Seeing none, we're complete.